We need to order, first order of business, please. I believe in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the first order of today is to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
I'll second you.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Next order of business, to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting for April 21st, 2023. Everybody have a chance to read them, any corrections?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. To approve those claims for March 2023, everybody have a look at them, any questions on any of the claims?
Oh, motion to approve the claims for March 2023.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Uh, to accept the balances and dispersments of the financial statements to the general liquor, sewer and water funds.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Again, to accept the, uh, Rainier Recreation Donation of $4,000.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
The motion to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry, and a big thank you to that again, appreciate that. Unbelievable, but appreciated. Uh, set the date, uh, for May 3rd for the fiscal hot closeout, uh, any issues with anybody on that on May 3rd? Okay, uh, make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. To accept the March 23rd, 2023, uh, liquor operating statement, if we have a catch, look at that, about another 5,000 bucks. Well, 20% ahead of last year, which was a good year, so that's going very well. Got a motion?
I'll second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. This is, um, the next item we have here is, uh, Cheryl, we're writing a letter to the county board in addressing County State Aid, County Road 20, right here in front, starting where out by Highway 11, where the county, where the county takes over from the state, up to the, up to the railroad tracks, uh, we need, uh, some resurfacing, milling, resurfacing, move curb and gutter, and hopefully, uh, get rid of the power poles and, uh, install ornamental streetlights. It's a process with what I have to, we've been talking about this project for a few years, but we want to put it on the county plate, so they can work that into their state aid budget, uh, which if they do work it into their state aid budget, there's no cost to the, to the city here and to this county, so, um, that's what I'd like to do with the permission of the board, to send this letter to the, uh, county board, so they can start getting that into the program. It is not going to happen today, but again, it's a nice improvement to the city.
Did you say no cost to the city of Rainier?
Yeah, we know, if it, this is a county state aid road.
Yeah.
And when, uh, when it's a county state aid road, basically the county uses county state aid funds, and they end up paying 5%. As far as any cost to the city, uh, you know, we haven't seen any plans or anything else. Sometimes they, uh, along with that project, they divert into up this street of the ways or that street up the ways where there's a minor sharing cost to the city, but with no plans, I can't see, there wouldn't be any, but if we could limit it to zero, if that's the case. So, anyway, it's, it's a very, I think, a very worthwhile project, I can really, you know, accent the city a nice approach, is what you see coming in, so. And it does need some work, and I know with that Todd has been trying to champion this and his wife have been trying to champion the project about, uh, traffic by the, um...
Well, I think they're doing great right now with that.
Todd?
Yeah.
The other nature speaks, your book, that's...
Yeah, well, into that, maybe they can work something into, into the design too, that'll help that. I don't know, right now it's just proposal to have them get it on their, on their, you know, in their, uh, view of projects, future projects. Uh...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Okay, uh, the next, the next, uh, item is to appoint two land, uh, land use planning commissioners. Uh, you have the, um, basically the ballot in front of us, uh, we could, there's nothing on the land use, uh, in the planning and zoning, uh,
Agenda.
Agenda right now, we could wait till next, next, uh, month when Todd's here, and we could get a, a phone vote on it.
Make a motion to table it till next?
Just table it for a month, for three weeks, it's only a couple of weeks really.
Yep.
Just table it in for a couple of weeks. Will we make that motion, in a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Uh, John, uh, the next is to review the Cootch County Sanitary Sewer District Surcharge Increase. John, you got, maybe you got a little information for us on all that, CEO?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, we need a woman to turn this on. Esalia.
Okay.
So, uh, anyways, a couple meetings ago, um, you received, uh, shall receive a, uh, transmission from, uh, uh, North Cootch Sewer District, um, and it, it laid out, uh, like, basically some information about, um, uh, for your budgeting process, and, um, it was, it was all right, but, um, in years past, I was gone for a couple of months, so I, I wasn't involved in this. But, um, in the past, when we've had high, super high flows, like in, um, last year, uh, we've just dropped that out in our estimator, you know, our estimator is the running average of the last five years flow, and so, uh, that tends to keep the peaks and valleys out there. And so, um, we, we just passed a motion today to, um, get rid of the high flow number for last year, and just, and just, yeah, so that should fix, I haven't run any numbers, but I think that should fix things. And so it should be a normal looking.
Okay, I didn't pay the last month's bill because I was waiting to hear.
Okay, well, that explains, so you can make it your index average, do you make that in that?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
All right, uh, next order of business, uh, to approve the ordinance, uh, 162 regulating the sale of edible CBDs. Can't, can't, but...
The, the CBDs?
The CBD, uh, products.
Are you pushing this out there, not necessarily make any, but just, uh...
The state is voting on that.
They have immediate license, it was already...
Well, no, this, they didn't touch any of this, though.
No, they didn't.
But this is a separate issue, the edibles, and if, I don't know if you guys want to keep thinking about it, or?
I think that last time we talked about it, it was that we keep kicking the can down the road, and we'd rather get something in place and then amend it as we see fit, going forward with any changes that they make in the legislature, uh, we want to end up having things go on without things in place where the city has some form of control and ability to say year in year or some, you know, the license approval process and all that stuff.
Some of the things that I added this time, just from listening to some of the council, was that no one that holds an intoxicated liquor license will be able to sell the edibles.
Yes, yes.
I don't know if everybody agrees with that or not, but that's, that was some of the things that I put in there because I've heard that from, um, some council members, I think that's the only thing that I added.
Well, I think what we're talking about here is, should we, uh, like Jim was saying, look at the ordinances, and since the states go to pass it, or did they pass?
No, it's...
They passed the cannabis regulation.
But, he, he, you know, we can't stop it, we're whatever thing, but we can regulate the sales of how it is in our city, and I think that's a wise decision, how we, these can control, I mean, we're not legal, it might not be legal here, but we can control who sells it, where is it sold, if it's sold here either.
Yeah, well, we approve, the motion approved this draft that we have out tonight.
Yep.
We can always, we'll have it on hand, and then you can always like do it, uh, later, but it's better to have that than nothing at all.
That's exactly right, without, without nothing, someone can come in there and they're not violating any regulations, so let's set the rules, let's set the regulations, and, you know, and we can control it.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll have a second, that motion.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Uh, we also had a special election for District 3, special election results for Cootch County. Uh, again, Adam McIntyre was elected, I don't know, uh, if the results were...
Around 75% of the vote for the Rainier resident, which is nice to have the Rainier resident on the commission.
I really appreciate the folks from Rainier, and everybody that comes out votes, but especially Rainier, obviously has a, a large voter turnout, and that's, you know, people say they don't like what's going on, they do have a vote, so they do can make their concerns, like vote for the one they want and that, so leave the vote and their opinions, so I appreciate that voter turnout, 75%, and an off-year election is tremendous. There was the rest of the county, well, there's only 100, well, it was a very, very good show for you. Okay, the next item of business is, uh, we've been contacted, the city has been contacted, uh, by Lakehead Constructors, uh, who is acting as the contractor and the representative for the CN to replace the trees that were removed, uh, in Seven Oaks Park. Late last fall, we, last fall, I went and got the, a tree service from Northern Tree Service, and, uh, they sent us a quote, which I'm going to pass on to, uh, Lakehead Constructors, that guy handling the project manager, Aaron Nelson, I said I'd send him the quote that we had, and he's been directed by the CN to take care of, uh, the replacement of the trees, and, um, I think at that time, he, he said we found as large as trees he could get that could be transplanted with a transplanter, that's, that's what I voiced to him, and along with that, I'll be sending a quote, and, uh, and we'll have other conversations on it, but, uh, before they do anything, I'll, uh, get the, you know, get back to council, whatever, just what we like, as many as we can get, um, at, at that size. Right now, the, the quote was for seven inch diameter Norway pine, and recently, I think we talked about Norway pine, about the largest transplant of oak is about a four and a half inch, and so, you know, I guess we can get that if we want, or I guess we can send them a quote and tell them what we want, so I guess we can stay in contact with it, and I would send this quote on to him, and then he can forward it to, uh, the CN, whoever they have to, to act on it. So there'll be some more conversations, I'm sure, about it, I'll just keep the, keep the council posted on what he comes back with and, or if what they decide, if they're going to go ahead and do it, then we'll get a date and just follow through with it, I guess.
Have we, do we have like a contingency plan if they throw that back at us and tell us that they're only going to, they're not going to do, consider that due to the, what we're asking, if they want to, if they push fine, you know?
Yeah, here's, here's my thoughts on that, Jim, uh, I believe small claims court is $15,000. And we have a quote for trees, so I, I would think we'd get as many as we can for $15,000. If they're $1,500 a piece, get 10 of them, if they're $500 a piece, or whatever they want, then we'll get, you know, that, 30 of them. But that's probably our best recourse, because obviously there was a trespass, uh, what the motion collected, small claims court is $15,000, that's probably the easiest route we'd have of collecting. They don't seem to be protesting it right now, but we'll see if they give the bill, and, and I'll keep it posted on that. But that would be my suggestion for the $15,000 for the trees, or, you know, if we can get.
Can I ask a question? Is there, um, from where we're going to get the trees from? Is there a success rate, one kind of a tree versus another kind of a tree, you know, that, you know, the oak?
You, we, you can, we can get any, you know, I mean, he's out looking for someone to plant trees for us. Lakehead is just the administrator for the contract, uh, it can be oak, it can be, uh, Norway, uh, the council had this sit, in a discussion about this, we would like the largest tree we could get that could be transplanted, and that's a Norway. Now, you can get, as I explained, we can get oak, but they're only four and a half inch diameter versus a seven inch, that grows quicker, so I think it was the council's preference that we went with the seven inch, but...
But is, is the, um, replanting of the Norway successful versus a replanting of an, I don't care its size yet?
We, we have somebody within the Cootch County Soil and Water that we work closely with, and, and we're doing a program right now unrelated to this project, that we're, discussion is being had, what, what plants best and where?
Right.
And so that can also be a conversation that we go to him for some resources on, but I know that because oak, it's Seven Oaks Park, and oak grew really well there in the past, so we would assume that some would survive there as well, and again, like, you plant, the larger you plant, they say the better chances of survival, but I, you never know, right?
Because some trees I know when you replant them, from, you know, the north branch has to be planted, planted more north.
Yeah.
Well, it's a professional guy that does tree spading, so they take the whole root system and that. And I think they had a really good, I know in the passing jobs we've been associated with, where they use a tree spade, they've had really good luck. Again, if you do it in, you know, mid-July, hottest day, and don't water them or something, you may have some issues, but anyway. Okay, I'll keep everybody posted on that, and, um, uh, the next order of business is the Voyager National Park Frozen Lake Access, uh, proposed plan.
Oh, I, Jim, Jim LeMeyer attended the meetings, and Joanne Keller attended the meetings, so we, I've read it, but I don't know as much as I do about it.
Well, it, it's a plan that, um, Bob Bradshaw basically said that they started working on back in 2017, when he first came into the area. Um, I will say that they're proposing two, two zones, this is a proposal. Low use zone and moderate use zone, and they're trying to, in this plan, outlaw the use of ORVs or ATVs in, not, like, specifically on the frozen lake. We all, I think they already don't allow ATVs on land, but this is the frozen lake service, and so that's part of the plan, they also had discussion of, you know, whenever they have their ice road, you're, you would be allowed to place your, or plow a road up to 300 feet off the main road, but not farther than that in terms of stationary, stationary ice houses. If it's anything more than, it has to be pulled by a snowmobile if you're going to make farther than 300 feet.
Yeah, snowmobiles are unrestricted.
They're, they're unrestricted, and they were not included, and they have the whole, he went into it, there's a whole separate legislation of why snowmobiles are completely separate, different from ATVs. Um, I will say the general consensus at the meeting was one of displeasure, simply because when it's all said and done, ac- access is being restricted. Um, they have, you can find this on their website, but they have put out a map, and they differentiated their proposed moderate use zone versus low use, and they did it in a way that is kind of deceiving in the sense that all this area isn't actually what we can access, it's only 300 feet off what the actual ice road would be when they make their ice road, and they don't always make their ice road because it's weather dependent, so, um, Joanne, if you have more to, um, to say on that?
Yeah, and I know that they're having, they're, they're struggling with, with what to, to define a motorized vehicle. So is, is an ATV a motorized vehicle, and so that's kind of part of the struggle with this.
Well, and again, like, I, I think that it would be important for, and this is just my suggestion, after, based off of how I feel and the feelings of residents I've spoken to about this, that I, if it's possible, I think it would be good for the city of Rainier to craft some form of, uh, open comment or response, because the comment period for this proposed plan is, it was May 3rd. They were only going to give us to May 3rd, which was ridiculous, in my estimation, and they extended it to June 3rd, so now we have some more time, but I think the city should submit their comment regarding this, you know, in terms, I don't know if that's possible, I don't know if how we feel is unanimous or warrants a response, I know I have had my own personal response. Um, it is also important to know that, I don't remember her name, but she's a supervisor within the DNR.
Shelley.
Her name's Shelley, I don't know her last name, and she brought up the point that the state of Minnesota never gave away their water rights to the federal government when they made the national park, they never, they always claimed they maintained their water rights. And so they're there to basically say, we encourage people to get out on the ice and the water because more and more people are just spending it indoors in front of the television. So, the park, as we see it, had, didn't even work with the local agency that they should have to come up with this preliminary plan. So they're at odds, they work together, but they're at odds on this, and so we were told to contact our representatives, um, and Adam, who is Pete Stogger, would be the one that we would go to, that we need to talk to if we feel like a response warranted from the city. Again, that's just my suggestion, I just know that I tend to think these things go incrementally in a way that they're going to restrict over 10 years, maybe 10 years next, it'll be something else that they'll restrict. And I tried to force them to say whether this was an honest attempt at getting public comment or is it just checking the box, Bob claims that this is an honest attempt to obtain public comments and ideas for this preliminary plan, and that's what I would have to say.
Jim, uh, actually, what they're saying there, but all the roads then in Voyager National Park would be plowed by the Voyager, by those, by the Voyager National Park people, so if they decide not to plow a road, or they say, oh, the conditions don't, aren't quite right, or some reason they don't do it, then you can't plow that road 300 feet off, but so, if they decide to not plow the road, then you have no access.
No access at all, and this has...
Right now, you know, we...
And someone brought that point up, this also has to do with a statute that they said that we are not in compliance with when it comes to how we treat the roads. Yeah, I mean, people can look that up, but, so they're claiming this, I think that there's a, an option there to be liberal with the statute that they said that we're not in compliance with in terms of letting ATVs and ORVs use frozen lake services within the park. I, I'm not a legal expert by any means, but we, again, we've been doing this since the park's inception, and so they're, now they're trying to get this up to snuff, and I don't know who's pushing this, and Bob would not, he would not come out one way or another to say how he truly felt of all the topic. He wouldn't say publicly, so.
You give a mouse a crumb, pretty soon he wants a cookie, and, uh, you know, uh, the state of, I, I believe the state of Alaska
That was discussed, yes.
has gotten into it with the National Park Service on who moves the water and everything else, and the state of Alaska, from what I understand, prevailed.
Yes, they did.
Minnesota may push the same issue, um...
They consider ice as land.
Well, whatever Alaska did, we're probably following the same cat's爪.
But isn't that what Paul Brown's lawsuit is about, the water?
Well, it's been an ongoing fight about this water rights for Minnesota ever since the conception of the park, because, again, they say they never turned them over, but then the federal government says anything within their boundaries is theirs to regulate and control, and so if you want to pick up the hammer, it's going to have to be picked up by our state legislators.
Yes.
You know, and, and there's got to be a trial case, well, there has been, from what I understand, I do a couple of individuals that Alaska has pressed the issue and prevailed, and so, you know, maybe our state will look at this, so that might be worth talking to our state legislators.
It is.
Because, like I said, uh, you know, if they're going to plow the roads, we're at their mercy, there's the roads. Use them, which is fine, because they've done a wonderful job in a lot of things for us, I love their campgrounds, I love some of this, but again, regulations without thinking about them, pretty soon we've got to break the law and do what we've always done.
Yes.
And that, and that's not right, so, I want to make sure of that myself, so...
You know, and sometimes with the weather conditions, sometimes if the lake isn't thick enough for a road, you can get an ATV out there, so...
Well, anyway, I, I think, I'm glad you girls attended, and I, I think that's right, that they moved it, so, uh, I think what we should do then is, is, uh, draft up some comments and, and send them to the, to our legislators and to the park service, of course.
I can, I can work with Jim and Joanne.
Yeah, that's fine, and, you know, and, you know, like, if he else started this, a couple of some concerns, and we can take him more, or scratch one, or whatever. Okay, all right, the, uh, that's it for, uh, uh, the meeting, other than, uh, May 22nd, I, I did contact our lobbyist down in the state just to see how the bonding bill's coming, and, you know, there's a lot of projects there locally, not just ours, but there's International Falls projects, and there's other projects that are, affect the state right here, and he said by May 22nd there should be some resolve on the bonding issues, uh, which, of course, is our, our peer, and like I said, there's International Falls, there's drivers, the projects, and, you know, Kerry Park and things like that. So those, those things should be worked out by May 22nd, uh, but that's all he could tell me, so, until the legislators get together, move kind of limbo, but May 22nd's not that far away, so.
Mayor Reiger, um, Robert Olson is here from Cantaliver.
Yeah, as I was going to say, go ahead, Robert, you got something? Yep.
On, uh, Saturday, June 10th, Cantaliver would like to have a live music, uh, event.
Can you speak into that a little bit? Get a little towards you a little bit?
On, uh, Saturday, June 10th, uh, Cantaliver would like to have a live music event in, in our lot across the corner there, and, uh, we would like to ask to close the street between, on Spruce, between Main and Finstead. I anticipate there will probably be a lot of walking traffic between Moonies and the lot there.
So where are you, uh, want it closed?
Uh, just the road in between the, the Cantaliver lot that's across there where the stage is at, and, um, and there's that, so, it's just that, that's...
I mean, what, across from Moonies?
Yeah, yeah, in between, where the empty parking lot is, that's where we, so just that.
Between Moonies and, and the Cantaliver parking lot?
Yes.
Just going to the...
Just that piece?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay, now I understand, so it isn't going around the corner, so I could travel around the corner?
Not the whole corner, I wanted to, just, just that small.
And then I'd like to, to ask if we can put a timeline on the music like we did before?
What's that?
A timeline for the music, the band.
Yeah, what, what, what was?
I think it was midnight.
Was it midnight?
Yeah, I anticipate it will be done before then, but that's, that's a reasonable one, I guess.
I think we could probably all use a little party once in a while, although we'll be doing it ten. Although Wilbur's only can. Okay, uh, that's request. Thoughts?
I mean, I don't have any concerns as long as there's an, an end point so people can get some sleep. And if that sounds like we're going to be done before midnight, then I think that's fair. I mean.
Well, now what about setting up a bar over there? Do you even have a bar set up over there? Do we need to do anything different with that?
They, they would have to do something totally different if they were going to do that, yes. They would have to have a separate, separate license, yeah.
So you, you plan on serving out of Cantaliver or what do you do?
Some meal.
I guess what would we need if, if we were going to do that? Or if we were doing that on future?
If you were going to serve liquor not on your premises, you would have to have a separate, um.
The catering?
I, it's a temporary, it's something that's.
Like Smokey the Bear during a.
It's a temporary license to sell off your premises. And we would have to get that in before the council, if you're going to do that.
Quickly.
For our next council meetings in May, if that's what you decide to do.
Second and, second and third Tuesday of the month.
Yeah.
So if you want a temporary license, bring your request to us at our next May meeting, second or third Tuesday of May.
Decide then.
Okay?
And then, but even, maybe even quicker because it has to go through the state also, so.
So get it in before the meeting, well before the meeting. The state doesn't work as fast as we do.
Can I go ahead and start the process on it?
Sure.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah. It's similar to like Smokey the Bear.
Yeah.
The state has to grant those licenses too, correct?
Yeah, it has to come through your first, I think, the state. So the quicker you could get it before us, the better. We might would have to call even a special meeting or something. We, I'll, I'll ask to see how quick it would take.
Yeah, okay. Carry that through with Cheryl and if that's.
Yes, I'll, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, it's open forum, anything, here we go.
We're here together, all agreeing us on the rights to the property of 3617, 2021 in Jameson.
Yeah.
Our neighbor, um, the property is owned by Chad Silver's. Vinnie lives there. And we're just really fed up. We've pretty much had it. Number one is the vehicles, there's five or six vehicles in the yard. I don't know if they're licensed or not. They're parking along the street, so it's a one-way road there for, when to walk. The car couldn't get down at the other day because he had a skidder that had cones around it and he was parked in the middle of the road. Because I've been there three years now. And the first year I tried to buy the property from Chad because it was such a pain in the butt right in the very beginning. But now it's like at night, there's three cars parked along the road, not in the yard because the yard is full of junk trucks, a skidder, a trailer, a jump.
Snow machine is not watching you.
The garage dropped up and jumped his car the other day off his flathead in the backyard. And, you know, I know the theory because it was a nice quiet area and peaceful and it's not been peaceful since day one. The second thing is, it's not commercial property. I, I'm a landlord, I've been a landlord for 26 years in town. If I owned a piece of property like that and someone, one of my tenants did that, the city would be on my case and I would have time, Frank, to get it cleaned up or I would be fine. If I had long grass, I would be, it's on mowing, they hire someone to mow it and I get charged for it. Something, I know we have, you have rules and regulations, but this is getting out of hand. It's not a commercial property. He pounded yesterday for two hours, getting, breaking up this truck. And it's just like, where's our piece of, what? You know, we're in a nice neighborhood, we all try to keep our yards clean, we, we mow our grass, we take care of our snow, we, we're all friends, but this guy is driving us bums. And I don't know if Chad Silver's still, and I talked to him about a year and a half, two years ago, and it was just the start of COVID. And he said that it was a contract for deed and Vinnie had not paid. But he couldn't do anything about it because it was COVID and he couldn't evict during COVID, so there was nothing really to do. I don't know that anything has changed, I tried contacting him and didn't get that. Who's responsible? Does anybody know? I don't know, deal with contract for deed, but is the landlord or the owner responsible or is it the person who's buying it on a contract for deed?
I sent the letter to the property owner and, and to, to both, yeah.
Yeah.
Can he have still May 5th to respond to that? I don't know if you've seen a copy of the letter.
Ryan left the house today, he had a big black trailer there.
I see that.
He was filling it full as fast as he could.
That was holding this truck that has been sitting in the yard full of garbage. He was emptying those two trucks that neither one of them.
Is that what it was?
Into the trailer. And then he doesn't start anything until after dark.
Yeah, I know.
I'm sure you hear.
At 10:30, he's out there with a bobcat running around, he's tore the yard all up. I mean, used to be nice green grass, now it's all mud and muck.
The snow machine starts at night and it turns.
He went all winter long, all night long. He didn't start till 10:30 and he went, I don't know what he does. He would roll and half hour later he'd come back and he'd go and he'd come back.
And all the bright lights.
Yes, all of the, the lights.
Shannon and Megan.
He was too close to me.
And I talked to the Assistant County Attorney, Molly French, and she said, well, every time he'd take off during the night, he'd come back and then he'd park the truck and it would be full of wood. So he's stealing wood from someplace, I don't know. But then she says, well, you need to call the sheriff. By the time I called the sheriff and the sheriff gets out there, he's long gone. Who knows where he's at?
Well, the other thing too, that I noticed when I was at Tris' yesterday was, he's been, he's been burning trash all winter and that stove he's got going in the garage.
I can smell it. I run and I, I was wondering where that smell's coming from.
I, I get it. Josie and I hang our clothes out. He, he burns it anytime. I think he's burning garbage, plastic.
Well, he's burning garbage for sure.
I smell that. I burn up the bike trails and I, every time I go past a certain area, I can get a bit of it.
And then if the pipe gets too hot, he'll go outside and knock it down. And then on the next day, he's cooking it up again.
So I called the city, International Falls today, I talked to Kelly about the code for, not that it's the same as Rainier or Jameson, but I asked him about the pipe that's over because it's right up against the building and he said, and it's really long. And he said, no, that probably would not be code if it's not a heavy, dirty, regular pipe that you're supposed to have. It's like a stone pipe. It's like a plain old junky stone pipe that is, he's so, he's sending fire to it.
Not to cut you off, but we sent the two letters and I think probably the best, we're going to go over there, we'll send Nick over too, because I think Vinnie is aware of that. I really don't know, because I know late last fall, uh, I was talking to him on a project, he has a garage, or he did then, down, uh.
Behind the horse.
Uh, you know, down by, um, Robert, Robert Glass, across the road, kind of from Robert's house. And there's a garage here where he could keep all his trailers and his skid steers and all that stuff. So, uh, again, we, we gave him till May 5th, I believe, but on top of that, we'll send Nick over there and, and tell him he's got to keep his, it's not a commercial lot, that he's got to keep his equipment there and, and stuff like that.
He did last fall. He cleaned it all up and handed across the street for about a month and a half. And then the next day it all came back.
Yeah, he had some over, uh, 116 over there by Bob's place.
Yeah.
That guy wrecked it all, but that guy chased him out of there because he was like, he was.
You know, that's, that's.
He was cleaning it all up again and throwing junk over. And the guy that owned the place, no, you're not, you're not getting out of here.
So then he brings it all back.
And so then he brought it all back.
And he brought it all back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's more than it was before. I mean, it just goes on and on and on and on.
Well, one of this is I think that he, he takes trades for his job instead of money and guys don't have the money to pay for it. They'll get a truck or beat up a truck.
We, we are aware of all these problems now, so we'll try to see if we can get them resolved before the 5th of May, but if they're not, after the 5th of May, we've given them the letter, we'll, and that's about a week away, a little more than a week away, so we'll.
Because we have so many people that walk, it's a beautiful area. They walk along there, they push their strollers along there, you know, it's just, and then they, it's just.
Well, the other day I was out raking and he had some guy by the name of Beavis that had white tennis shoes on and I was raking and he was out there. I had to go in the house, I was just like this, I'm like, oh my God, they yelling at the square, it's just nonstop.
No, we'll, we'll try to do something, whatever we can do, we'll, we'll proceed.
I'd like to invite you, I'm going to do my dishes some night, you can look right at it. It just, it's, I get so frustrated.
I, I sympathize with you and I understand this, so we'll see if we can get something accomplished there.
I was going to buy it and make it into a park.
Yeah. But they were sent letters, so again, like, there's kind, it's kind of like a waiting, a waiting game because he does nothing by May 5th, then that's.
But then what happens?
It's chess. Well, then we kind of have to go after legally probably as a city. I'm not sure how that, how that works, but I know if you're interested, are they able to see the letters that we sent them or is that private?
I, I can say, we, we've been very successful on, on complaints like this. I, I, three, for example, I know for sure they were disasters and we got them cleaned up. The people don't want to work with us. You know, Cheryl's written some letters, we made some phone calls. I personally went over there and done some of the work myself to help clean it up and done. And so we'll, we'll, we'll try to get this, we'll resolve it, but, you know, again, we're on your side on this.
Is it Vinnie's responsibility or is it Chad Silver's responsibility?
It's some of them.
Yeah. I, I think going through the owner might be.
In the end, it is probably the owner.
I'm guessing it's like anything else, if your needs are something.
Well, he had listed for sale once, but then the realtors wouldn't go there anymore. They've got one time and it was so bad that they were going to go back in there. I mean, it's, it's probably him to tell you the truth.
It's a safety hazard, yeah.
We'll try to get as much as we can resolved on this. We're not going to sweep it under the carpet.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, appreciate it.
I have, I have one thing on the center of 130 over here, those two dips, is there any we can? Yeah.
The dip will disappear, the dip, the dip will disappear. That's where, wherever they put a cover across the road and that's.
Like a bump sign?
Oh, yeah. We, we, we can get a, I, I got some.
I didn't know they were there because I haven't driven on it in a while and I came, it's like, whoa.
A month now, you won't even know it and it goes up or down, you know, and, and it's just anytime you put a cover, so, um, sure, Nick, I got some bump signs, we can get bump signs from the city. We have a bump sign, so, bump I had or bump. Nick, Nick will put that out. I know where you're talking, we're writing Everett's. It's between Everett, between Everett's and, um, Grassman's. It's unbelievable, it'd be that much and then the next time they get a, or something. No, hardly, practically. They didn't, they fill it in with different soils and they put sand, pushed at the pipe and you've got all this clay, so things are heeding that differently.
That was like that 50 years ago when Joe and I lived there.
Yeah, well, whenever, whenever you get a pipe in there, you know, that's different than the heavy clay soils or the other soils, so they freeze different. One will swell up and then one won't and, and then you get the dips. But we will get a bump sign on that. Anything else from anybody? Most to adjourn.
I'll second.
Your favor?
Aye.